What's up guys, welcome back to my channel. This is a very spontaneous video. But guys, today I am struggling. I am struggling to study. I have an exam in two days, so today is Wednesday. I have an exam on Friday. It's an exam, it's one of the three exams. We have neurosciences, so I'm in the fifth year of medical school, for those of you who don't know me. And I have my neurosciences rotation now. So basically, we have three exams, one after ophthalmology and ear, nose, throat. The other one after neurology and the other one after psychiatry. So that's three parts of the neurosciences rotation. So I have the first one, which is ophthalmology and ear, nose, throat. But the fun part is, our group, it's like part of a group, we call it Trugkomdach in Dutch. Basically, what that means is you're split up in smaller groups and then you have like once in a while, you come, you have lectures together, have tutorials together and just like refresh your knowledge with each other. So half of the group is doing the rotations at the ear, nose, throat department. And half is doing the ophthalmology, but we both get the same exam. So that means you have to study on your own personal time, the knowledge from ear, or you have to gain the knowledge from ear, nose, throat if you are not like doing that rotation. So for me, who is doing ophthalmology, I have to get the knowledge and vice versa, they also have to get the ophthalmology somehow. So, that means, yeah, guys, I'm gonna put this down. So that means, I have to study a lot for that. You don't have to, because basically the point is that you show that your knowledge is improving with the three rotations. So like, because it's so difficult to explain the exam guys. But anyways, I'm just trying to get the ear, nose, throat knowledge in now. It's a lot. Medical students, you can relate, it's a lot, man. This, this part of the body, like the head and the neck, especially this part where you have like the nose, the ears, the throat, everything is just so tightly packed and there's so many things that can go wrong here and there's so many pathologies. It's a lot. This is the first exam I'm actually having from this area focused. But guys, it is what it is, we have to do it. So I already did the ophthalmology part and my rotation is on ophthalmology, so I already like have a lot of the clinical knowledge from the hospital. So I'm mostly focused on this, but I studied as well and I did some past questions, so I feel pretty confident about that part. But the ear, nose, throat part, that I said I have to do. That's what I'm trying to do now. But then, the twist is, the fun twist which makes it a lot difficult. So it's Wednesday, so I could still study tomorrow, but I have a party tomorrow night which I'm organizing, the Afro City Party. It's gonna be late and I have the party in the night till like 2am and then I have the exam on Friday morning. Yeah, right, that sounds crazy. What are you doing, what are my priorities? But guys, one thing you need to know about me is I'm someone who likes to be very intentional in my life. So I decide what I want to do and I make provisions for that. So basically, I've been studying a lot for this exam, even though I don't have to study that much, because I want to make sure that I'm putting in the most to be able to allow myself to take the risk of partying the night before. I can do it because I don't need that much sleep. So it's gonna be fine, it's just I need to make sure that I'm not feeling guilty when I'm partying tomorrow, because that part is gonna be late. Shout out to all of you who are coming to that party, Afro City, the first edition in Mastermind. But yeah, guys, basically, this is my study session and I guess you guys are gonna just see me study. So I'm gonna try to, you know what, guys, I'm talking too much, let's just, let's start studying. So I already deep out of the studying yesterday, I have my Onze Levene Compendium Booker. A special collection of medical like knowledge books. I think, I don't remember when they started, but this is like one of the first editions they came out with. There's like, I think, a lot of additions which have come after this one. But the books are really good, they're like a summary of the medical knowledge you need to have in certain departments. And lately, they also have like pocket editions which you can take to the hospital with you. So I use this, I have Ambos which I also use. I don't know if you guys know Ambos, but that looks like this, pretty much. So you have like pathologies, I was studying the swimmer's ear, so like otitis externa, it's like an inflammation of the ear. And they have like grouped into diagnostics, treatment, prevention, prognosis, references, epidemiology, clinical features. And then you have like a whole library, clinical knowledge, basic sciences, clinical skills. And what I'm mostly focused on now is clinical knowledge. They have like for the different departments, pretty handy, ear, nose, throat. And then ophthalmology, which are my two main things now. So I click on ear, nose, throat and then like split into different subsections. So that's pretty handy, so I use that as well. And then, of course, we have our dear, dearly beloved Google. It's camera, the ghetto. So I use Google as well to just research stuff I'm not sure about or which is not clear here or which is like contradicting each other. And then, I have PubMed. So like I use articles as well to like just see if there's some, if there've been some advances made in the knowledge. Because this book, some of them are old, even Ambos is not that, like there could be articles released yesterday. So I also use PubMed to see if there's more recent articles I can like reference. And then I have my little notebook here, which I use to study nowadays and I also using the clinic. Because I think it's just handy for me to have my knowledge in one place. And like I can't carry a big book to the hospital. Taking my phone out is not really very professional in the hospital as well. Sometimes you do have the space to do that, but a lot of the times you don't. So like I like having my small book, because if you take a book out of your pocket, they know you're not gonna like do something or be distracted, it's still part of your studying process. So like I study with them, so I also like have my notes in there and everything during the lectures and tutorials, which you also have on certain, like every week or every two weeks. I also like take my notes in here, so all my notes are taken here, all my study notes are taken here. All my like summaries or notes I make at the hospital, like little things I wanna remember to maybe study later after I'm done consultations. I also put them in there, so I have that with me as well as my study companion too. So basically, that's all I need to study, basically. I need companion books, Ambos, Google, PubMed and my little booklet. So yeah, guys, let's, let's do this. Guys, one struggle, so one struggle is actually, this, one struggle I actually always have is, so you have the books, these books are like, good things are companion books are like Dutch. But like for example, Ambos is an American, predominantly American, the knowledge and stuff. You can change it, I think you can play with it, they have like European conversions and stuff like that in there too. But like even the YouTube videos are mostly made by like Americans and stuff. So a lot of the treatments, especially the treatment plans and like the criteria which they used to diagnose certain diseases are based on like American standards or American units and stuff like that. So when they mention treatment plans and medication, they used to treat stuff like antibiotics and stuff like that, it's mostly, 50% at least of the time, it's different from what we do here. So it's like, oh, you need to be careful with that, because, yeah, that's not the same treatment we have here, for example. So that's why you always kind of like need these books or at least need like some other Dutch reference website to kind of like cross-check that. So you know the knowledge you're getting is actually what you can use here. It's not bad to know what they do, so you can at least compare sometimes as well. But it's always good to be aware, something I wish I was be aware of, the fact that, okay, if they say this treatment is what is actually done there, like or they mention that in the V as a treatment option. I always check, is that actually feasible here, is that what we do here, is that, why do we not do it or why do we do it? And stuff like that, that's something I always think about when I'm studying pathologies and how that dealt with and treated appropriately.
Now let's talk about the marangotomy procedure. A marangotomy is a relatively simple procedure.
Halfway there, guys. So I finished the part of the ear infections. And now, let's see the ear traumas, already did like, studied half of this. And the rest is study. Guys, there's something, there's something interesting, you know, like I also, I always like to think of, since the first, second year of medical school, where I noticed there was like, I got a lot of knowledge, but like if a family member of mine falls sick or if they like have a skin disease, for example, I would not know how to treat them, like that's a fling, I always had, I think that was before, like, you know, Malone in the UK came out with like the black or brown skin, the book, which has like different pathologists and different skin tones, that was before that. And I always noticed I like had the, I'm not just urged to like know how to treat my own family members, because it doesn't make sense, I'm getting knowledge. And like, if I have someone sick at home, I cannot treat them. And I think something was happening at home back then which triggered me to think about that. But it's like nowadays, when I get knowledge, I always think of, okay, if there's something that has to do like description of a color on the skin, I'm like, okay, but how though, like how though, how would you identify it here? And like there's this thing which you have, it's called the battle sign. And it's basically like a bruise at the back of the ear, which kind of tells you, it's like indicative of certain pathologies. Like the bruise is normally like blue, but I was just thinking now, I was reading like the battle sign is a sign of like basically a fracture in the skull base. And I was thinking, if it's blue, how would you see here though? And it's like, just to all medical professionals out there, be, be, be watchful about this kind of language or this kind of knowledge you're getting, like specific to certain factors which are like based on certain norms or certain, certain standards, which are not very diverse. Because the battle sign, for example, I think, I think the battle sign is gonna be difficult to see on my skin. But anyways, that is something which I always pay attention to when I'm studying and like you have these things which are variable depending on the skin tone, but then it's just like always taught in a specific way with a specific lens on. Which I think is something that has to be changed, but for now, I'm changing it in my own brain while studying, so it doesn't like get learned wrongly. But anyways, traumas of the ear. Man, that's one thing, I'm telling you, that's one thing I love about medicine, like you learn so much about your body, which is so practical, you can see it happen, you're like, it's crazy. Like I'm studying about now, something which is called exostosis, and it's basically also called the surface ear. And it happens when like in your eardrum, basically, like in this ear canal, the bones on the side, it's part of your your, like your canal is made out of like cartilage, part of it is bone. And like the bone starts like growing into the canals due to exposure to like cold water. So like surfacing, people swimming in the cold water, like exposed more to cold water, so as a result of that, like the bones in your ear canal start like growing towards each other, so like your ear canal is like blocked by these bones. Ah, like that is, that's cool, man. Like some of this stuff you study, just like, whoa, how do I, how do I just study, like it's, it's cool stuff, the surface ear. Interesting, exostosis. Alright, still on the trauma, I don't know how this is trauma, but I guess this could be a traumatic experience. It looks so cool, listen to my nose, not cool. Man, you just gotta love medicine, like you just gotta love medicine. Like you can just think, I'm the kind of person who like, I love anatomy, I like to think mechanically, so it's like you just think about it and it's like, okay, you have those bones which like are getting like over triggered, over stimulated and they start growing towards the middle, the surface ear. And then as a result of that, like the ear wax is like stuck behind them because it's produced in the ear, so like it kind of like gets stuck behind them, piles up. As a result of that, you get like inflammation in the ear, inflammation in the ear leads to like deafness. Not like deafness immediately, but like hearing loss and then eventually deafness if not treated properly and then it's just like, that's how it becomes a pathology. Crazy, because like surface ear, sounds cool, no? You have a surface ear, but then like a surface ear can like make you deaf. And that is no longer so, 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 yeah. Guys, that's the thoughts I have when I'm studying, man. The ghetto, the ghetto. I don't know, surface ear sounds cool, no? Or my other one of the things that sounds cool, surface ear. Drummer's ear, surface ear. Swimmer's ear. Where did I get all these names from, man? The ghetto. I think surface ear sounds cool, except the effects are not that cool, but you live and you learn. Alright. Telling you, man, everywhere I see color descriptions, blue, red, like, on whose skin though? Blue, red, that's a very one-sided description though. But I think this is, this is really outdated, this are outdated, these are things which are slowly like going into extinction in the medical field, or I think should slowly go into extinction in the medical field. Descriptions such as red, blue, red and stuff like that, it should still be there, but it's sole nature, like it's loneliness. The fact that it's there alone should go into extinction. So it should always be something in the lines of red or blue or darker or something, but like just make it a more diverse description than just blue reddish. Because I feel like blue reddish is so one-sided. But anyways, that's on the part of diversity, let's just study, you know what we're talking about, I'm aware of it. I hope you're aware of it too, if you're a medical student. And yeah, we progress. This guy starts the video and says that we're gonna have a very, very short, very emphasis on the very short discussion about a very important topic, okay, I agree it's an important topic, but it's very short, this thing is 90 minutes, man. Okay, let me try to fast forward and see if I can get to the important part. Okay, that took a while. Sometimes I never finish this video, guys, because these people are just talking for too long, they're just talking for too long. But, okay, so I just finished the traumas now, there was one thing I've been trying to understand since yesterday. I finally got to understand it, thanks to the video which took 10 years. But it's basically like the temporal bone traumas and how that affects hearing loss. Apparently, there's like longitudinal and the transversal temporal bone fractures and how that like affects your, your inner ear or your outer ear and that like leads to like a different type of hearing loss that I didn't understand, but like now I'm finding it is studied. So that was it for the ear trauma part. I think I'm gonna sleep soon, because I'm thinking of going for a run in the morning and then in the morning I wake up and I continue, see what I can get more of ENT knowledge. I don't think I'm gonna finish all these, guys, to be honest, I don't think I'm gonna finish all of ENT. Because like they don't really need to know that much, you need to just know the basic things which you get in the clinic, which I don't, which I think, I don't know, just studying the first few pathologists can give you, but then again, it's like this, you can always study more, but I'm gonna try to study as much as I can, but I don't think I'm gonna finish all of the section. But anyways, like promised, my story before I go to sleep and I'm doing my study session, study session for today. I think this was actually productive, for the amount of time I've studied, I think I've studied for like one hour, one hour thirty minutes. Like I've been up the whole day, I woke up this morning at like 5am, studied, went for a run, came back, went to the library, studied, went to the hospital, came back, helped a friend and then I'm studying again now, so I've not like had a sleep or a nap, which I normally like like to have to be able to function properly. So yeah, I'm kind of tired and I have to wake up again tomorrow morning at 5am, I always wake up at 5am till I just do something before going to the hospital. So I think it's advisable for me to go to sleep and it's raining outside, so that's good conditions to go to sleep. But, my story, so today I have this patient in the hospital, guys. It's an African patient. And it's a young girl, six years old, something like that, four, four to six years old, six years old, I think. Came into the ophthalmology department, emergency department of the ophthalmology, we have a whole ophthalmology building, very fancy. It's crazy how many things you can do with the eyes, guys, mind blowing. So she came into the ophthalmology department, who is messaging me? Came into the ophthalmology department with a white reflex. So like basically in the eyes, you have like the pupils, the, the, the middle part, the central most part, like the black part in Africans, which is like surrounded by the brown part. In mine, it's difficult to distinguish because my, my brown part is like still dark. But basically, the pupils, which is like the middle part, normally when you shine light into that, you see like a red reflex, which is like basically the light reflecting on the retina, which is the back of your eyes. So when there's a white reflex instead of a red reflex, there's something white in the middle blocking. And normally, when you see a white reflex, like I studied this yesterday or like two days, because I've been studying for the past three days, to allow me not like fully party tomorrow. So I know white reflex equals retinoblastoma, so like there's a cancer in the eye, which of course mostly younger kids who are like under the age of four. So, this patient came in around six, white reflex, which her dad saw, good thing, smart dad. In my head, I'm like, oh, 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 retinoblastoma, no, this child has cancer, oh no, oh no. But then she was older than four, so I was like, okay, that's, that's already promising, maybe it's something else, but in my head, I was like, what else could it be? It's a white reflex, retinoblastoma. I was, I was, I was doing the consultation with my supervisor and she left the room for a bit to go and to her call. But I had like done the, the anamnesis, like talked to the, the, the parents and the child, so like just got a history taking and then looked at her eyes with the slit lamp, which is what we use in the ophthalmology department to like microscopically examine the eyes. So she left us to like call, like take a call or make a call with someone the supervisor, I think. Because it was an interesting case, like a lot of people were already like waiting to hear what the patient actually had or what we found. So she went off on the call and then the dad asked me, yeah, what do you guys actually see? And I was like, yeah, we saw the white reflex, which you also saw, but then we saw a few other things, because it was like an infection, posterior infection of the eye and stuff like that, where the iris was like, like, I like, it was like stuck to the lens and stuff like that, all of it was not good. But the white reflex was the thing which was in my head the whole time, so I was like, yeah, we saw the white reflex as well. And I was like, yeah, do you guys see the white reflex often? I was like, yeah, we actually see it often. Hoping he was not gonna ask me what you actually, what the diagnosis was eventually with the white reflexes, because then I have to tell him it's cancer. Or I could just say, I don't know, but I know. So I was like, who, please don't ask me the next question. Then the mom was like, oh, you see it also in children and adults, I was like, yeah, mostly in children, because the white reflex is mostly in children. Unfortunately for me, the doctor walked back into the room before the dad could ask me what was the diagnosis in most of these kids, because they were like all scared, it's their daughter. And it's the first time any of the kids is like having an issue. So I was glad she walked back into the room before they could ask me and I had to tell them like, yeah, mostly it's cancer, or I could just say, I don't know. I don't even know what I would have said back then, to be honest. But that was like something I was like, ooh, tricky, good thing, like whoa, whoa, I dodged a bullet there. But eventually, we did like extra checkups and stuff like that and apparently she has like a cataract as a result of an infection, which we don't know yet whether it comes from, it could be like a systematic problem. Which is possible, but it's just weird that it came out of nowhere, so they sent her to like the pediatric department for them to like do extra checkups and make sure that she has no other underlying pathology which were missing. But she has like a long trajectory, because she has to like operate and everything. But yo, man, I was uplifted to find out that she didn't have retinoblastoma, which is a cancer. Because, yeah, man, I was, man, I'm sensitive. Yo, when I, when I saw the white reflex so clearly, I was like, God. Yo, I could feel, I could feel myself get a little emotional, because I was like, man, she's so young and she was so lively, she was so joyful. They were like, do you see with this eye? She was like, no, I don't see anything, man, I was like, oh, oh, poopy. Man, I'm telling you, hospital, the hospital, you see, you see so many different people with so many different stories and sometimes it uplifts you and sometimes it puts you down, but it's part of the job. But yeah, so I was so uplifted to find out that she didn't actually have a tumor, because we, we could do it, like we did an echo of the eye, like an ultrasound of the eye. And with an ultrasound, you can actually see the back of the eye, so you can see like this is a tumor, like the tumor grows from the back, from the retina. But there was no tumor. Man, when I saw that echo, I was like, oh, thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus. What she has now is still not great, but at least it's not a cancer. So yeah, guys, that was, that was the highlight of my day today. The fact that she didn't have a cancer and she has something else was super uplifting. And I left the hospital like, thank you, Jesus. That was like the last patient I saw today and I was like, okay, the four hours we followed this patient was absolutely worth it. But yeah, guys, that motivated me extra to like, to study more about retinoblastomas and other pathologies that could cause white reflex in the eye. So yeah, to all of you watching my videos out there, if you ever see someone with a white reflex, just any light can do, you don't need like a medical light, just take a light. Shine it in the middle of the person's eyes, sometimes it's tricky because the pupils have to be like wider. But just shine in the middle of the eyes and everything in equal, you should see a red reflex inside. I don't know if you actually work with the phone, I never tried with the phone, but I think you work with any light, you see a red reflex. If you ever see, especially in kids under the age of four, if you ever see a white reflex, a white reflex. If you ever see a white reflex instead of a red reflex. Run to the house doctor. When I say run, I mean pack your shoes, pack your bags, pack your coats, pack your raincoats and you run to the house doctor or run to a nearby practitioner. Because that could be bad. But anyways, guys, that was it for today. Thank you all for sticking around for my study session. Tomorrow, we're going to continue in the morning with deafness. So deafness and balance problems. So that's what we're gonna continue tomorrow in the morning at 5am when I wake up. But yeah, guys, that's what a typical session, study session looks like with me. I normally study in the library, because I don't like studying in my room. But today, the rain made it ghetto and yeah, I just thought it wasn't worth it to go to the library. So I did it at home, but tomorrow morning, was it gonna be at home before we go to the hospital? Yeah, guys, that was it. I hope this study session helped someone. I hope this study session helped someone. Let me know if you were inspired by this study session. Guys, we all have struggles. Life's a struggle, studying's a struggle. Enjoy the process of your struggle, because you are being formed. Remember. Diamonds are made under pressure. It's a mic drop. Over now. Peace. See you on the next video.